I call to order the regular session of the City of Tarpon Springs, Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Roll call, uh, 6:30 PM, roll call, please.
Mayor Kulianis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
And I see we have reflection tonight would be by Mr. Gee Thompson, Pastor Gee Thompson. Thank you very much. After, after the reflection, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. O gracious God, our Father, we come to you first and foremost to say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to assemble, to conduct city business once again, continue to protect and cover each and every one of our leaders as well as the citizens. We ask right now for your Spirit to guide everything that we say and do so that it will be according to your will for the good of all mankind. We ask that this prayer be in your holy name as we all simply say, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have one proclamation. Uh, it'll be Community Planning Month, so I'm gonna ask the Planning Department to come on up. So, um, you know, it seems like we have a month for everything, but this is a good month, Planning Month. Um, you know, you guys are special to me because I cut my teeth on being on the Planning and Zoning Board, and you all were wonderful to work with, and you're wonderful to work with here. And you know, the Planning Department, you know, our city is always planning, right? We're always, um, looking at our, our vision, we're looking at our strategic plan, and we're always trying to see that anything we do fits within the confines of those, uh, those, those strategies we have as a city. You know, again, to always be preserving what we have and always trying to progress as a community. So I know you guys are the gatekeepers of that, and I want to thank you. You, you are amazing. And where's your fearless leader tonight?
I'm thinking, I must need a break.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say blown up, sir. No, that's from movie line. Mike, you know that movie line, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Okay, whereas planners work to improve the well-being of all people living in our communities by taking a comprehensive perspective consistent with, um, taking a comprehensive perspective consistent with the vision of the city's strategic plan. This approach leads to safer, resilient, more equitable, and more prosperous communities. And whereas we celebrate the many valuable contributions made by our Planning and Zoning Department as nothing less than essential to our success, success role that planning plays in creating great communities each October with National Community Planning Month. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in helping decide on choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners commend the work by our Planning and Zoning Director Renee Vincent, staff Pat McNeese, Caroline Langford, Ally Keane, and Kim Creighton. We extend appreciation for the vital role our Planning and Zoning Department manages in the daily operations of our city. Now, therefore, I, John Kulianis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Community Planning Month. So Kim's last day here at City is tomorrow, and she is just amazing, and we, we care so much about her. She's such a kind person. When I was on, and she, it's not just me, she does it for everybody. But when I was on the Planning and Zoning, I mentioned something about my daughter, just something that my daughter liked or whatever, and the next time I saw Kim, she brought me a book. She says, "I think your daughter would like this book." And, you know, I just, you're just very kind. You're sweet, and we're gonna miss you very much.
Thank you.
So I hope you enjoy these flowers, and you're always welcome back. So if your adventure doesn't work out, you wanna come back to Tarpon, we'll, we'll make sure that he finds you something to do, all right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, would the Commissioners come up? We'll all take a picture with Kim.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Here.
I don't need a microphone, do I?
Yeah, you do.
So what I wanted to say is, uh, you don't know how special this woman is. For many years, I worked with her, uh, almost eight years, actually, on the Board of Adjustments, and she was the one that always reminded me, we have a meeting coming up, or we had a break coming up. Um, and I know we're on a personal level, and there is nobody nicer. So I wish you the best of luck, and we will miss you. Uh, you know, there'll be like an empty space there, and, uh, the mayor, as he said, "Come back and visit." I don't know if he's offering you a job, we don't know about that, but, you know, we wanna wish you the best of luck in your new adventures. So, thank you. Let me give you a hug.
Best of luck, Kim.
Let me get that microphone. Hey, Mike. No, can you just, like, screw it so it goes down, like that?
Thanks.
Yeah, that, that.
That'd be tall enough, Mike.
That, that, right there, you got your finger, right there.
Ooh, you started early tonight.
That's brutal. Yeah, that's good.
Just remember, I don't get mad, I get even.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Okay, so let's go to public comments. These will be public comments for things that are not on the agenda. Please state your name and your address, please.
Evening. Peter Lockes, 514 Ashland Avenue. Um, just a comment to maybe educate the board as to how the Zoom works, 'cause I heard a little impatience the last meeting. And, uh, so when you call in, if you wanna raise your hand, you gotta press nine. So you're sitting there listening, there's a delay. Actually, the phone is ahead of y'all on the TV. And then you'll ask Austin or Mike, and he calls, goes up to him, he'll ask, there's another delay, then you gotta push star six, and there's another delay where he says, caller, you can, but in the meantime, it's been about fifteen, twenty seconds, and y'all are sitting here wondering, why isn't he talking yet? So I just wanna educate you as to how that works. There is a lot of feedback and delay before you actually can confirm that I'm even on there to speak. Excuse me. So I have a couple of Isaiah passages that, uh, I would like to maybe relay. Isaiah 1:23 to 26. "Your rulers are rebels, companions of thieves. They all love bribes and chase after gifts. They do not defend the cause of the fatherless. The widow's case does not come before them. Therefore, the Lord, the Lord Almighty, the Mighty One of Israel, declares, 'I will get relief from my foes and avenge myself on my enemies. I will turn my hand against you. I will thoroughly purge away your dross and remove your impurities. I will restore your judges as in the days of old and your counselors as at the beginning.'" And then on Isaiah 3:11 to 15, it goes on, "Woe to the wicked! Disasters upon them. They will be..." I have to say, I'm pleased to hear that there is some peace in the Middle East, and I hope it's long-lasting and endures. But I'm more concerned about the peace, or the not lack of peace, that's going on in some of our own cities. People are being dragged away from peaceful protests. People are being abducted off the street, grabbed out of cars, under the guise of being a different color, or a different person, or a different race, or a different nationality. God, through all of this, says we are all equal. We are all children of God, and we need to start realizing that what we do in terrorizing, victimizing some only creates more enemies for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. I'm Patricia Bishop. I live at Santos Isle in Tarpon Springs. I am here because of a problem with the complex and what is happening to seniors and to people on Section 8 HUD, and not the people who are not on that. I happen to be one of those people, and no one realizes that. And I'm just gonna give an insight into what brought me onto this program. I lost my mom at seventeen. I lost my husband, he drowned on my honeymoon. My dad lost both his arms and legs due to Battle of the Bulge. I had a heart attack in my forties. I had systemic lupus due to the stress, and my second husband died of pulmonary fibrosis. So I am on this program. I am not treated right. There is a lot of abuse because the system does not recognize the people that have gotten there. My building had a fire in July. Due to that fire, three apartments were destroyed. Mine is fine. An elevator is not working. There has been no communication between Richmond Properties or between, um, Pinellas County Housing. Due to that, we've been in the dark. All of a sudden, on October 3rd, I got a letter from Pinellas Housing saying, "Get out by November 30th." No warning, no other place to go, nothing. So now, I came to people I knew, but I'm not in your jurisdiction. There are seniors gonna be put on the street, and I, active in the community, I'm a parts and wreck. I have, I'm on the crime watch. I have had no one willing to step up except Commissioner Eisner. So I am here to, someone guide me, someone help me. And this is not me. I do not tell my life, and I do not ask for help, but I am here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Austin?
No, sir, there are no hands up.
Okay. Let's go to the consent agenda. Uh, that's number, uh, number two, attorney fee, Eunice Salzman. Three, satisfaction release of liens. Four, special events, St. Nicholas Jingle 5K fundraiser, Snow Place 2025, thirty, 36th Annual Boat Parade. Number five, award file, uh, for utility billing audit services. Number six, approved file for the post-storm recovery services inter-local agreement. Number seven, Pinellas County Community Development Block Grant Sub-Award Agreement. Number eight, FDOT sub-grant for Highway Traffic Safety Project. Number nine, award file for fire hydrant and valve maintenance repair and flushing. Number 10, award file for the purchase of police and fire vehicles. Number 11, increased file for lighting repairs, maintenance, and installation of street lighting. Uh, is there any, any Commissioner wish to pull any of these items? Okay. With that, roll call, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, I need a motion. I'm sorry. I need a motion. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianis?
Yes. Okay, let's go to business item, number 12, ratification of Building Development Director, uh, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, um, um, the, I guess it's been a few months ago, our building official announces retirement, and Keith Meade stepped in as interim and done a fantastic job. Really happy with the work he's done and with the department, and so reckon, uh, I wanna appoint him as our, uh, Director of that department and our building official, and looking for your ratification.
Okay, let's have, um, Commission, uh, discussion. I, I'll begin. You know, I met with, um, with Keith back when he was, um, appointed interim, um, Director, and I told him that, um, I wished him success and that the things that concern me, and those were, um, that, that one is that the, the, um, interaction with the public be positive, that we have, that the department have a good attitude, and, and that, uh, that they are, um, you know, basically friendly to the public. Um, the second was that where they said no on a permit, that they helped the applicant to a, um, to a yes, and that they give them a path that they can follow to a yes, rather than just saying no and having the, the applicant just leave the, uh, the building department. So I understand that all those things are happening, um, and, and Keith, I know you're, um, you know, doing your best to, to raise that, the, um, the interaction with the public and, and to make it more positive, and therefore I will be supporting you to have that position. So, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. Um, I believe this position is one of the more difficult, um, 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 Director positions because you're dealing with, with, uh, with, uh, with the public very often, and often with a problem. Uh, I got to meet with Keith when he was named interim, and I've been very pleased with his knowledge, his experience, and, and his customer service attitude, which I think is crucial for that, uh, for that, for that, you know, position. Um, I've also not heard one complaint about our building department since he has been the Director. Not, not one single complaint, and I think my colleagues can testify that people will complain about that department as often as they want to because it has to interact so much with the public. So I think that speaks to his leadership and to the quality of staff we have in the department, so I, I wholeheartedly support this. Thank you, Keith.
Um, Commissioner DiDonato?
You know, I, I can only echo what my colleagues have said. I, I too have not had any complaints since you've been in this position. I, I have to echo again what, what the mayor just said. I, the, the biggest complaints we hear is, all I get from the building department is what I can't do. And, uh, I realize that there are rules and regulations and laws that you have to follow, um, and I appreciate having a position such as you in, in that position to be able to, to know what those rules and regulations are. It's just that we all work for the people here, and I believe firmly in my heart, my soul, that pretty much the word no shouldn't be around. It should be, can't really do it that way, but if you did it this way, or if you call this person or that. In other words, we need to try to work with them, that's all I ask. When you can't, you can't. But these people pay our salaries, and I know you understand all of that, uh, but I'm glad to have you come aboard, and, uh, I could also say I've not had any complaints since you've been there, so I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Meade has stepped up, this is his second time stepping up, you know, within the, the last couple of years, and, uh, he did a great job. I had a chance to speak with him several months back, and, uh, he understands the community, he's been on staff for, for a good amount of time, has an ability to, uh, it's tone, it's, it's, when you tell someone no, it's sort of the tone in which you can tell them, you know, and that makes a big difference, too. And I know he'll be able to try to work, uh, him and the department with, uh, the residents, business owners, and applicants, uh, to the best of their ability, but be able to say firmly no if it can't be done. So happy to support Mr. Meade and, um, the whole building department. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So it was very interesting, 'cause just a few minutes ago, while I was out in the hallway, I actually spoke with Keith Meade, and I said, you know, for many years, I've run a business, and I always said that you need to have ninety-eight percent of the people swearing by you and two percent swearing at you, and you're a successful situation. And he agreed. We did have a nice conversation back in the day when he was stepping up to the plate. Um, you know, of course, you get the little bit of butterflies trying to take over a department, and, which I'm sure Mr. Chris knows as well. You get those little butterflies in your stomach because it's, it's a big responsibility in a city like this. We're, um, we, we expect a lot from our department heads, and, um, for the most part, they perform. So I'm very happy to see, as, as Commissioner Banther said earlier, um, we're always getting a call about the permit department this or the permit department that. I can honestly sit here as everybody else has said, not gotten a call, a negative call. I mean, if anything, it was always now that things have gone smoother than smooth. So, um, I also will support you in any which way, shape, and form, and, um, I, I just wanna congratulate you and thank you for your performance. It's not easy, uh, what you took over, and I, I knew your apprehensiveness, and I was glad that you decided not to just take it on, but try it as a trial for three or four months like you did, and then step up and say, yes, it's something I'd like to do. So, uh, I'm all on board, and thank you for what you're doing. It's not an easy job.
Okay, um, is there any public comment relating to this item? Austin?
No, sir, there are no hands up.
Okay, let's come back to the board. I'd like a motion, please.
So move, second.
If there's no further comment, roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianis?
Yes. Congratulations. Okay, item 13, approve the task work order for the Planning Support Services. Um, the City Manager will handle this item.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mary. This item... Thank you, mayor. Uh, thank you, mayor. This item, um, is to do a Parks and Rec master plan, which is in our, uh, comprehensive plan. It's called for. But also, uh, I think it's important because, you know, since I, shortly after I got here, I heard about the, the yard waste facility is destined to become a recreational facility in a park. And also we've been getting, um, just random requests for everything from bocce ball to splash paths to swimming pools. So rather than sort of look at each thing individually, I think it's important to look comprehensively at our entire Parks and Rec system, our facilities, what we want to see in the future, what we think we need, and then plan for it, and then we can budget for it accordingly. So, uh, that's what this request is about. And I don't know if, um, staff is here to answer specific questions you have on the scope. But it will, we will end up with a plan for the yard waste facility and for, um, all of our parks. What, what we do need, what we, when we can know what we do need, what we don't need.
Okay, are there any commission, uh, questions or comments? Commissioner Banther?
Yes, I'm, I'm just assuming that we will, you know, in further, you know, time, we will, you know, learn what's, what's, what's being planned and have some input on that as far as actual facilities.
Yes, there'll be, uh, public input, commission input, uh, then of course you'll get an, an early draft and see the direction it's going.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Um, yes, I just want to reiterate to the public because, um, people get to thinking that we're doing this. I've got a frog in my throat that won't leave. People are thinking that we're jumping out, doing things that we aren't ready to do yet. This has actually been talked about, developing the site for probably 25, 30 years. But it's a restricted site. I believe that there's still, I think, four more years or five more years.
I think so, yes.
Right around there left before we can do anything with that at all. But it indeed is not too early to start planning, uh, and start the process of thoughts and funding and, and all of those kinds of things and needs. At one time it was, it was gonna be a, a little league complex and a, an adult league complex, uh, with fields. That's been at least 30 years ago that we started talking about that. So, um, moving it forward as best we can, I think, is certainly, and then planning accordingly is certainly good news to, to, to hear from.
Commissioner Culias?
Yeah, I have trouble, uh, wanting to approve this bill or, you know, approve this extra funding. And I have to ask some questions to, um, our recs director because, uh, I just want to understand this, right? We got a contract increase on February 14th for a total annual amount of $350,000. But they're, you know, we're asking for another 248 for some additional services. And I, I don't know what, what we need to, the recs master plan needs to consist of. I mean, we're all aware of what we need. We need a swimming pool, the best spot for it's over at the, at the kayak, uh, area. We need maybe a few more courts, but at the same time, we shouldn't be spending money now for that disposal site that's got pipes and fumes coming out of it if it's four or five years from now. Let's wait for the EPA or whoever has the opportunity to release it and then we should start spending money on that. I, I don't, it's way too much money for us to be talking about, you know, rec and, you know, I mean, as long as we're adding more courts or doing that swimming pool should be the number one. I don't see why we should support a big amount of money like this. I mean, 350, six months ago, another 248,000. What else are they really doing to create a master plan for this community?
Well, the plan will look at, uh, all of our existing parks and sports facilities and determine their condition. If we need to focus on upgrades or maintenance, it'll look at the, the requests for additional facilities like another's pad, splash pad or a pool. What good locations would be for those if we were going to add more amenities. Uh, it, it, the, the yard waste thing is just a piece of it that we, we're doing this. We might as well come out of it with a plan. This, this will take the better part of a year to do this planning. And then it has us look at all of our facilities. Is there a way to link them together? For instance, that's something that's come up in some of our strategic planning. How do we link our recreational cultural facilities? So it's, it's a very comprehensive look at the entire community, everything we own in terms of recreation and park space. And, and, you know, it, do we have enough? Do we need more facilities? Should we convert? You know, the question comes up, should we convert tennis courts to pickleball courts? And so it, it looks at that holistically rather than doing things sort of spot, spots here and there around the city.
Okay, but I, I have this question. This $350,000 we had this increase to, what really did that take care of? That we need this extra 248 now to really do the work that should be done in this 350, if you ask me? So that's, I'm trying to understand it all.
Janina, can you speak to that?
Yes, mayor commissioners, good evening. Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. So this, um, funding for the project is what we're asking you to approve. It's already covered in the 350,000. We're doing no, there's no increase to the actual planning support contract. This is part of the budgeting piece that planning, planning and zoning has said, yes, this is something we will, um, you know, take part of our budget and share with citywide, uh, that we will use for the annual amount.
Okay, um, thank you. I don't, no more comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. Um, do we have a breakdown, uh, Janina of, I'm sorry, I didn't see you sit down. Do we have a breakdown of how this whole program is going to be, um, spent?
For the, the master plan or for the actual planning and zoning, or the planning support contract?
Uh huh, both.
Okay, uh, for the planning support contract, I can get you the breakdown because there are like, um, scoped out projects that they have, uh, planned, so to speak. We, we can, I don't have that with me right now, but we can provide you with a copy of that. And then I can have Jamie and Tommy come up here and explain exactly what's going to be included in the pricing of the master plan.
So are we going to have outside sources coming in and we're going to be paying them to do surveys and things like that? Or we're going to do it in-house?
Uh, so technically the consultants that we use to do this task work order, they are an extension of us. So it's just, they will come in like any other project and they will do the surveys, they will do the input, they will provide, um, public outreach. And they will also do like draft and presentations for us at the end. So each of that is outlined in their proposal, what they'll provide with the whole master plan.
So we're not, this, so if I can understand it correctly. Because, you know, when we send out a proposal and we get a survey, the survey comes back and they say so-and-so has .08 hours and they get X amount of money and that's the amount of money. And then each line, we have it line by line item, okay? And then at the end it has how they came up with it. Do we have that for this?
Yes, we, I'll have to get it from the consultant, but there is a task breakdown and the hours and the rates that each one is accountable for.
Because I think also I may be speaking out of line. Isn't that what you wanted, PK, as far as that breakdown?
I'd like to see it, but I mean, at the same time, I just think it's, a lot of the stuff we're talking about, I think staff could do themselves. I mean, we already know where the pool needs to go. We already know there's another, um, uh, a few other things that need to be done too as well. So I just, it's a lot of money for, to have some outsider sit there and say, this property, we can do something with, oh, it was the boat ramp. We need the third boat ramp for the community. So, uh, we don't, that's all.
I wish this was in the backup. That's because it would help me, um, move it forward. Because I'm, in a, in a way, I didn't really see it being a problem, but bringing it up, um, in the meeting sometimes changes my mind and I'd love to know what the, you know, cost items for each and everything. And this may not even be the time to go through that all, so, you know.
Well, he does have a breakdown for you, so I'm gonna let Jamie speak with that.
Uh, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, Jamie Taylor, Assistant Director, uh, Assistant Director for Public Services. You'll see in the backup, one, two, three, four documents down, uh, there is a basic services fee summary and that breaks down, um, the, uh, master plan into five separate phases and the fees associated with that between, uh, project initiation, data collection administration, uh, needs assessment and analysis, vision, goals and strategic framework, master plan development and plan adoption. So that's the, uh, larger picture, uh, overview of the fees. And then, um, within each of those, there will be that aspect of community outreach, um, community engagement, the, uh, assessment of our properties of what we do have, as Charles was saying. And then also in there that I found really important is, uh, they're going to be helping us identify funding opportunities. So that's something that we can take away from this 250 that's being spent and really work towards, um, you know, it's not just a plan that's going to go on the shelf. It's something we can work with and, and make happen. One of the business items earlier today was the community development block grants and that's $150,000 for a gym floor. So that's just one example of, uh, opportunities we can leverage and utilize to enhance quality of life for residents. Uh, property values right there, our, uh, community rating system, um, so all, all those, or score. So all those things are our positive outputs there, so.
I hear what you're saying. I would like to not be able to be here for the five minutes and, um, make a decision without first looking it over. I wouldn't be doing my job if I did it any other way, so, um. I mean, if I'm last, I mean, I would, are you going to ask for a motion or?
Mayor, you want, should we like defer this to get more?
That's where I would go.
I want to make a motion to defer.
I, I would make a motion to defer this to be able to go through. There's, there's no, there's no rush on this, right? I mean, whether it's this meeting or next meeting or?
Um, so not a rush as far as, uh, this meeting or second meeting. It's my understanding that it would, uh, be implemented after November 1st, uh, opportunity within our contract that we have with, um, with half. So, um, you know, I think, uh, broader look into, into, uh, what we have, uh, here and then discussions to talk about the specifics of the plan. Uh, we can certainly facilitate that over the next couple of weeks.
Why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't, uh, you've made a motion to defer. What my recommendation is that you meet individually with commissioners, uh, explain in detail, answer their questions individually. And then let's rendezvous back here at the next meeting. And I think hopefully everybody has their questions answered and, and can make a better decision. Because right now it seems like we, we're, we're not certain right now, so. So, uh, there's a motion deferred. Is there a second? There's a second?
Are we doing, mayor, specifically to the next meeting?
Yeah, let's defer, that's, we're deferring it to the, the next meeting, a commission meeting. And what date is that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to be here, which is not a problem for me, but, you know, obviously two-two is a denial, I believe, correct, uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
So I'm not saying they will deny it, but, you know, just be mindful of that. I mean, I, I'm ready to vote tonight, but when I have two colleagues wanting more information, I want to.
Do you mind, do you mind, uh, deferring it to the next meeting? We have all five members, which would be the first meeting in, in November?
Well, um, I don't, but, uh, Commissioner Banther just said he's okay with the meeting.
Then we're only going to have four and if it's two to two, then we, we don't, let's, let's, let's defer it to where we have.
I'm okay either way.
Let's defer it where we have all five members.
Yeah. That's fine.
November 4th.
What date is that?
November 4th.
November 4th, okay. Are, are you okay with that in your?
I am okay with that. I'll, I'll amend my motion.
That's fine.
Second?
Second.
Okay, um.
Make a comment. Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I mean, we, we've seen that. We've been part of master plans before and, and how they, you know, the approach and then reaching out to the community. And so, uh, not, we can do those, but that doesn't mean that it's fully representative of the community. It's just what people get involved with. And, you know, we made a decision up here for the pickleball courts and because we heard the residents and stuff too. So I just, um, I just don't want to spend a lot of money on certain areas that we really can't even do anything for a long time. And, uh, like we talked about, which is the most, it's super pricey, is a pool for the community. We know we have an idea that kayak drop-off area. It's been set up that way for years. And a third boat ramp for the community. That's, they're some of the biggest, so, thank you.
Let's have the, uh, have the individual meetings with the commissioners and that way they can be better informed to make a decision on the, on November 4th.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's have roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Okay, item number 14, discussion and direction on the mission and responsibilities of the Maritime Commerce Committee, uh, Vice, uh, City Manager.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, Commissioner Banther requested that this come back and it was, uh, actually good timing because we kind of stalled out at the staff level and drafting the resolution in terms of number of members and, and the specific charge. You know, when we sit them down the first time to meet, um, what's going to be on their agenda. So some more direction in terms of the makeup of the commission, the, this committee, the number of members, terms, those kind of things you saw in the draft resolution, if you can have that discussion.
Okay. So let's, uh, let's have that discussion. I'll begin. I, you know, um, I think Commissioner Banther has, um, a, a specific idea as to what he believes this, uh, committee should accomplish. I'm, I think that we could use the same kind of procedure that we used, uh, on the, picking the charter revision. Is every, every commissioner come with two names? Then, uh, if, and, and then we, you know, now, every commissioner can nominate up to two people. I think seven, uh, members would be sufficient for the, for the committee. And again, if we, we need to pick, pick people that are familiar with, um, you know, with the waterways and such. But, um, uh, Commissioner Banther, what's your?
No, that, that sums it up. I just wanted that, that this item tonight to make sure we're all on the same page. So hopefully the first meeting in November, we can have the first procedural vote, uh, to reform this, this committee. I don't seek to change it from the last time it was really, just, um, want to give the opportunity for each, for each commissioner to appoint two people. So I just want to make sure my colleagues are still on the same page and in support of this. And if they have any questions, that way we have time between now and November 4th to get their questions answered. But I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the community of people wanting to serve on this board. So I think we, 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 we've all heard those, 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 those voices. It's very encouraging to me again because this should be a committee that meets ongoing. It should not be a special committee just around the dredge. I think the dredge is one of their primary focuses, but that's an ongoing effort. And I think the sooner we get in front of that, the better. Because it seems like as soon as that, the dredge finishes, it's time to get in line for, 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 for the next one. And, you know, when, when you involve the state and, and, and federal government, it's just not, nothing's quick. So, um, that's pretty much it. And I look forward to hearing my colleagues', uh, inputs as far as who wants to be on that board in the, in the November meeting. And I think it's going to be a positive thing. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I too feel it should be a permanent committee, uh, and take in all our, all our waterways, uh, ways. And certainly we have plenty in, in Tartan Springs. And we have the site, uh, for dredging now to, to, to keep in the loop so that we don't have to spend 10, 15 years getting what should be a five-year project done. And I think this committee can certainly, uh, plan accordingly and work towards those goals, um, easier than just a one-time committee. So I truly support it. I think the seven, it would be fine. Um, I'm fine with two and two if we, we, depending on how many we can get. But I've had positive feedback as well on, on this committee and, uh, people are glad that, uh, we're thinking of our waterways again, so I support it.
Commissioner Culias?
Oh, I, I have no problem supporting this. That, mayor, you, you think seven should be enough? Just, the only reason I ask, it's going to be ongoing and what we, we see other, uh, depending on what time of the day it is, you might, you know, only have so many participants, you know what I mean? And just, uh, I guess the more, the more that have the ability to be involved would be good. So I'd like to probably say at least between seven to nine if we could. And so, um, but yeah, at some point we'll be able to talk about what, everything we're looking for, for the Commerce Committee. That way they can do a macro approach on everything related to the, to the city and, uh, look forward to the November discussion.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner. Because I had a number of nine in my head, um, but I'm okay with seven with two backup, two alternates. Or we could have, um, nine with one backup, you know? Either way, I'm, I'm very flexible. I agree with Commissioner Banther. You explicitly explained exactly what's on my head as well, um, that it's an ongoing, um, thing. It's not, the water moves 24/7 and we have to make sure that people are on top of it 24/7. So I, I have had good feedback. My only fear that I have is that, um, I just don't know if my feedback is your feedback, is your feedback, you know? So we will not know until we put the names, you know, down pat, whether we have duplicate, um, interests or not. But I'm hopeful because, um, you know, or not. Um, but I'm hopeful because, um, you know, the back bays, we have a, a survey going out now, as we all know, and we need to know how we're going to move on that, and like, uh, Commissioner Banther said, uh, the minute you're done with the dredge, you start the procedure for the government to stall, and, you know, it's always a, a long project to get them on board, so I would prefer that we start this ASAP. So thank you for all your comments, that we're all spot on.
Let, let me ask the City Attorney, is, is it improper for us, let's, let's say that we each have two, uh, people that we want to nominate, is it improper if we gave those two to the City Manager, and that way he could see how many duplicates, because what I'd hate to have is come here on that day, we all have two, and four of us have the same name, and now we don't have enough people, so is it?
Is there something wrong with giving that to the City Manager to, uh, go through that and notify you if additional people need to be, uh, just because?
Are you guys all right with that?
Sounds great.
Yeah, and then we can, then we can all can add people if we?
The way it's clean too, it's not, you know, messy, yeah.
Yeah, is that good?
What about you, you, can we check with the clerk and see if, what kind of response she said? I mean, I don't even know how many people responded to?
I mean, I've, I've, I've gotten people, several people have asked me to be on it.
I don't know how many of them actually went to the clerk's office.
I don't think it went to the clerk's office, I think it was just people, yeah, talking to us, like, you know, charter review, same thing.
We can have them, we can do it like after the fact, they can, we can have the names, and then they can fill out whatever they need.
Because people will talk about it and then not do it, that's all I'm saying.
But we all, but you, there's nothing prohibiting you from soliciting some people that you think are qualified to ask them if they'd like to serve, so, um, so let's do that, let's, let's agree to let the City Manager accumulate the names from us, and then he can see how, what we're, if we're insufficient to have, and it, and should we instruct him to let me go for nine? Is nine a good number, so we have a odd number and they can vote?
The only thing though, how are we going to choose who doesn't get their second pick? Like, if there's five of us, two each, ten, right?
Yeah.
So how do we, how do we, I'm fine with nine, I just want to know how do we decide who?
We can vote on that when we get, if we have, if we have all, if we have these cert, everybody's entitled to, to two. Uh, again, we're going to have duplicates, most likely.
Gotcha.
So then, if we have some, you know, two extra people, or three extra people, then if we have to vote on them, then we vote on.
Okay, that's fine.
But we also go by people that miss meetings, if they miss a meeting, they lose one vote.
There's nothing wrong with having alternates, uh, two.
Yeah, we can do that as well. So maybe we vote, maybe we go nine with two alternates.
That's a good one, you could do a little better though, Mike.
Let's just, uh, let's see what, let's see how it pans, let's see how it pans out, and let the City Manager be the scorekeeper.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, so we don't need to, to vote on that, we just, he has that instruction. Okay, so let's go to ordinance and resolutions, uh, item number fifteen, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five seventeen, in ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending portions of chapter twenty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, adopting the impact fees for water and sewer connections for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, effective January first, twenty twenty-six, and providing for annual impact fee adjustments each fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-six, and on October first of each year thereafter, based on inflation rates for construction, that is ordinance twenty twenty-five seventeen, read by title only on second reading, advertisement was done on October first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, Mr. Geiger?
Thomas Geiger, Public Services Director. Uh, today we're bringing back the second reading of the water and sewer impact fee, uh, adoption. Uh, the major changes, or the, the one major change from our last, uh, discussion in the previous board meeting, uh, we had previously considered two options, uh, for consideration for the board. Uh, one was the option A, which was the, um, you know, sort of the, the impact fees based on the, uh, value, the, I'm sorry, the reduced value based on age over time of our infrastructure, and the other was full replacement value. Uh, we discussed, uh, the board gave us some guidance, uh, that we can, uh, you know, we can adopt impact fees at a percent of recovery, and so we have updated it to be eighty percent recovery at full replacement value, and that's what's presented, uh, before you today in the, uh, the updated impact fee analysis. So all the study is the same, uh, it's just a policy to, uh, change that will be at eighty percent of, uh, option B, which was the, uh, full replacement value.
Thank you. So let's go to Commissioner questions, uh, I don't have any, as this is the second reading. Um, Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No, sir.
Commissioner Cuyas?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
Okay, let's go to, any public comment on this item? Austin?
No, sir, there are no hands up.
Thank you. So I'd like to come back to the board for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
If there's no further comment, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Okay, that concludes, uh, all the agenda items. Let's go to board and staff comments, um, Assistant Chief?
None.
City Attorney?
Nothing, Mayor.
City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, yeah, just sent out an email to you all, I'm going to the Fort Re Development Association Conference, uh, tomorrow morning, West Palm Beach, so I'll be there for the rest of the week, and then, um, I'll stay down there to visit the grandkids, uh, be back Sunday night, and Scott will be, uh, will have the helm.
All right, pay attention, learn something, when you're back. City Clerk?
I have no comments, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Banther?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, I will not be at, at the next meeting, my wife has family coming in town from Seattle, so I have a lot of little nephews coming over, so I have to tend to that, so I, I thank you in advance, and obviously support what you all do in my absence, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner DiDonato?
I, I just want to, it gives us, uh, two weeks to come up with a list of, of jobs that we could assign to Commissioner Banther, whether it's, uh, I'd just like to, to, um, bring up an item that I've talked to, uh, some city staff about, the City Manager and, and the City Attorney. There's a bill that passed unbeknownst, apparently, to, to me, I, I knew it was in the wheels to, to come out, but I didn't know it had passed, but apparently it has, and it's called SB one eighty, and basically what it says from Tallahassee is, they're gonna, they want to use our power to decide how we can do, do different developments in our own city, and furthermore, if we decide we want a moratorium for a brief period of time on any, any projects, they will decide if, if they should let us do that. Um, with all respect to our colleagues in Tallahassee, I, I, I have always been a home rule, uh, if you ask the state reps about Tall, uh, Washington DC mandating to them, they complain, but yet sometimes Tallahassee forgets that they try to do that to us on this level, and I oppose it wholeheartedly, and I'm asking that, uh, I don't know if we can join the suit, there is a suit against this, uh, particular bill, I don't know, and there are several cities, uh, that are involved in it, I don't know if we can join it, but if we can't join it, we can at least do a, uh, resolution supporting it. I don't have the rest of you feel, but I'm bringing it forward at this time, and I ask for the commission's direction.
Absolutely, on my part.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes, uh, thank you, Commissioner DiDonato, definitely the, like to look at that and support our home rule, uh, at all costs. Uh, I have no comments, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't know who was, or who wasn't at this last Saturday, Sunday art festival that we had at the Sponge Docks, it was tremendously well-received, people enjoyed, it gave a shot in the arm to the people that have really been hurting and looking for, you know, um, business, um, some of the comments I got from some of the store owners, they would love to have one of these a week, um, but, you know, of course, that's not possible, um, but it was really, it wasn't extremely hot, it was nice, um, and it was very well-received, and it, it was just amazing. Um, pretty much that's it, I just want to thank this board, um, I have probably four more minutes to keep it under the seven thirty deadline, all I want to say is tell Ruth to put the, uh, chicken in the oven.
I'll text her right now.
You're, you're on your way home, and I appreciate you taking all my sarcasm, thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, you know, there's times where you have to put your politics aside and, um, commend, uh, what is good is good, so, uh, a lot of people were freed, uh, in Israel, um, and, uh, anytime that we can have an opportunity for some peace in this world, uh, we need to seize it, so I think it was a good day for the world, and, um, that's good, and we, you know, we, it was, we did our peace poll, um, opening, and, and maybe it shot some good juju around the world, so who knows?
Didn't do bad.
Yes.
I think Commissioner DiDonato?
Yeah, I was gonna bring, I just want some, some direction where we could ask our attorney to?
If it's okay with, uh, commission, I'll contact the attorney, I, I just wrote down his name.
As long as the rest of the commission feels that way.
So I can notify the board, if we can get on or not.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So Vice Mayor, just in case, you know, um, uh, you know, I, I gotta go up to Washington DC next week, before you, the next time, the next meeting, I will have, uh, participated in that, uh, endeavor of mine, so just in case I don't make it back, uh, and, and I, and I drop on the, on the, the, uh, streets of, of Washington DC, um, so, City Clerk, you gotta get this to him.
I'll give him any ideas, man, I'll give him any ideas.
Anyways, everybody have a wonderful, uh, rest of your week, and, uh, adjourned at seven twenty-seven.
Look at that.
Tell him I got a guy, I know a guy.